Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you all for coming today to the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee meeting on the 13th of December. This meeting stays open to the public and it has been webcast and we've received one question from a member of the public by the submission deadline. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from town hall staff and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website and paper copies are available at the meeting. There is an agenda reports plaque plus two supplementary packs and we are just waiting for one paper to be brought up. I'm proposing a small change to the order of business so that we can consider item 16, minutes of the urgency subcommittee held on the 29th of June and 21st of July 2022 alongside item five. I would like now to go around and ask members of the committee to introduce themselves. So if I can start here with councillor Holmshaw.
Hello, it's councillor Brian Holmshaw, Green Party member for Bromhill and Charleville and deputy chair of this committee.
Councillor Mary Lee, I represent Darnall Ward.
Councillor Anne Murphy, I represent Manor and Castle Ward.
Councillor Peter Garbutt, Netheredge and Sherrill Ward.
Councillor Vic Bowden, I represent East Echelfield, I'm substitute for Gail Smith.
Councillor Anne Whitsikoff, West Echelfield Ward.
Councillor Colin Ross from Dorantotley Ward and Lib Dem spokesperson for this committee.
Thank you, everyone. And I did just feel like I was having a slight case of déjà vu with regards to the moving items of the agenda. That was from the last month's meeting and shouldn't have been part of this meeting. Thank you very much. Do we have any apologies for absence, please?
Yes, only do. Councillor McRoney is unable to attend.
Thank you.
Sorry, I reiterate what councillor Bowden said, apologies from councillor Gail Smith, but Vic Bowden, he substituted for Gail.
Thank you very much, councillor Ross. I understand that there are no exclusions of the press and public today and looking at the papers and the déjà vu that we've all just had, I would assume there is no public question because we did have one at the last meeting. So is anyone else in the room here to ask a public question? No, I don't want to miss anyone out. Okay, that's great, thank you very much. Do any members here today wish to declare any interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? If so, please let me know now. No, thank you very much. Okay, item number five, minutes of the previous meeting. Has everyone got sight of the minutes? Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? And are there any matters arising on those minutes? Councillor Holmshaw.
Hi, thank you, Chair. I'm going to raise this once more. This is about the corporate opportunities register, which I have raised at every meeting since May. Now, the reason I'm raising it on the minutes is that I've raised this previously at other committee meetings, that there is a lack of a corporate opportunities register. This was passed at council early this year, full council, so I think it should be forming part of the agenda each time. But also when I've been raising this, it has not been appearing within the minutes. So for September and for November, my name hasn't appeared on there next to my question, unless I've missed it. So I'm raising it on both counts, one for the minutes, but also secondly, this does need to start appearing with it on our register. We've passed it as a full council. It could be a very short item, so it does need to happen.
Can I ask Andrew to respond, please?
Thank you very much, Chair. Andrew Jones, Director of Services. Just to respond, Director of Councillor Holmshaw, I'm slightly embarrassed that it doesn't appear on the work programme because councillor Holmshaw is correct, he's repeatedly raised this for discussion both within the committee. What we have discussed it with our Head of Business Strategy outside of the last meeting and we intend to bring this forward as an item for discussion within the group of the committee that meet the chairs, the deputy chair and the lead spokesman for the Lib Dem, the Quad, as it's sometimes known, that meeting. And we'll take a skit steer from there in terms of how we want to develop that for the committee. I think also on Fiona's behalf, it's just, it's just one of the things where Fiona wasn't here for the last meeting and a colleague was covering for her, so it should, as per the minute, six points free. It was agreed to actually enter into the forward plan and that just has not been actioned. But it will be actioned from here and we will bring it up at the chairs and deputy chairs briefing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Andrew. Councillor Holmshaw, are you all right with that? Thank you. Okay, item number six, as referred to earlier, there are no questions from the public and no petitions. So item number seven is the work programme, which is page 25 of the agenda reports pack. Presenting officer is Fiona Martinez.
Hi. Okay, yeah, so the work programme item, this is an opportunity for you to see all forthcoming items set out for future policy committees. As you'll see at the top of the document, appendix one, we've got all the proposed additions and amendments made to the work programme since our last full policy meeting. One new item there for mainstream sufficiency, which is proposed to come to the policy committee to be held in January, and a number of rescheduled items underneath that. So the purpose of this item really is for you to confirm that you're happy with the new items or rescheduled items and add any other comments that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the work programme? Councillor Ross.
I just noticed that in the work programme, there was a budget monitoring report supposed to be at this meeting and unless I've overlooked it, I can't see it at the January meeting either. So I'm wondering when we next agree to consider the budget.
Thank you, councillor Ross. So we were informed relatively late before publication that that item would not be coming to this committee after all, so that's why it's still on the work programme. But it's likely to be coming to January's meeting now, but we haven't received confirmation of that yet, which explains why it's not currently on the January policy committee work programme. But yes, it is due to come then rather than this month.
Are you all with that response, councillor Ross? Thank you. Any other questions on the work programme? Thank you. So we move now to item number eight, which is the future of school improvement and the Learn Sheffield Commission, which will be presented to us by Kevin Strawn. And have you all now received the paper which Fiona brought on for us? Thank you very much. Kevin.
Thank you. The subject of this paper is the future of school improvement and the Learn Sheffield Commission. The purpose of the paper is to provide the committee with a summary of the Learn Sheffield commissioning arrangements and outline potential recommendations for next steps following the current commission end date. The recommendations put before the committee are to note the work currently undertaken by Learn Sheffield and the changes in government guidance and the decisions taken by a school forum regarding funding for school improvement, endorse future work being undertaken to develop option three, note the circumstances that would require Sheffield City Council to resign as the supervising authority of the school company and finally agree to seek an agreement from school forum to de-delegate funds from school budgets to provide a service co-created with school leaders should option three ultimately be agreed by the committee when it is brought to it. So the background, Learn Sheffield is a school company. Sheffield City Council holds 20% of the voting rights in the school's company and participating schools, including all schools, academies and colleges, hold 80%. The company was established following cabinet approval in July 2015 and has been commissioned to manage and deliver school improvements across Sheffield. Learn Sheffield provides support and challenge to schools and colleges across the city. Learn Sheffield is currently commissioned by the council to deliver the statutory duties relating to school improvement and following cabinet approval in July 2021, a further contract was entered into and the contract runs until the 31st of August 2023. Learn Sheffield has two main sources of income, funds received via the Sheffield City Council contract and a subscription offer that's been available to schools in the city since 2018. Approximately 90% of all schools in the city subscribe to this organisation. Under recently, SEC utilised the school improvement monitoring and brokering grant to support the investment to Learn Sheffield Commission. The grant has been provided to support councils to fulfil their core improvement activities with an amount received by each council proportionate to the number of maintained schools in the area. In 2122, Sheffield received a grant of £268,000 which was transferred to Learn Sheffield, supplemented by additional dedicated schools grant allocation to deliver school improvement. In 2021, the ESFA Education and Skills Funding Agency launched a consultation on the future of the grant beyond March 22. This proposed that in future these functions be funded for maintained school budgets and the grant be reduced by 50% from March 22 and full removal by March 2023. This has proceeded and the 50% reduction of grant is now in place. In February 22, the school forum agreed to continue to de-delegate funding to maintain the commission through to the end of August 2023, after which time Learn Sheffield will cease being responsible for fulfilling the council's core school improvement activities unless we negotiate a new contract using an alternative source of funding. From September 2023, Learn Sheffield intend to continue to deliver services to schools and other organisations and be funded by a fully traded model. Schools forum agreed to de-deligation of £268,000 or the above values until the 31st of August 2023, when the expectation is that Learn Sheffield develop a traded model. This was agreed at school forum in February 22. If the council choose to enter any further contract with Learn Sheffield and wish to utilise school finances, school forum would be required to approve that the delegation of funding. So there are three options being suggested. The first option is to offer a new contract to Learn Sheffield at the existing contract value. This would require Sheffield City Council to either seek approval from school forum for investment or find alternative funding. No alternative funding is available at this time. Option two, offer a new contract to Learn Sheffield that a reduced contract value to deliver reduced services to include just the statutory minimum. Again, no alternative funding is available at this point. And option three, provide no further investment in Learn Sheffield. The Learn Sheffield contract would be allowed to come to its natural end and Sheffield City Council would fulfil the core school improvement activities currently provided by Learn Sheffield directly to schools. This is the recommended option. It is proposed that funds for the council to implement this option would be sourced by saving on services in kind provided to Learn Sheffield and de-delegating an agreed amount from maintained schools budget shares. The additional cost that SEC will require through schools budget would need the approval of school forum, although the Department for Education are clear that local authorities must remain adequately funded for these core functions and where agreement cannot be reached with school forum, the secretary of state has the power to intervene at that point. SEC would work at that time with the school forum to agree an annual amount based on a cost that it serviced designed following consultation with school leaders. SEC would seek agreement with the school forum about this at the earliest opportunity. Learn Sheffield, as I've said, is a school company with Sheffield City Council as the supervising authority. The status of the company will continue at the end of the contract. The regulations do not stipulate a requirement for SEC to be a director or a member of the school's company as responsibility sits only as a supervising authority under the Education Act. Should all the governing bodies of schools maintained by the supervising authority cease to be members of the company, the supervising authority must resign from its role by serving 56 days' notice on the company. SEC entered a contract with Learn Sheffield under a TEKEL exemptions based on SEC being the supervising authority and exercising the control. Any changes to SEC's role in Learn Sheffield for the duration of the contract could mean the TEKEL exemption is no longer valid and means that the contract does not need procurement regulations. In response to this, any changes in SEC and this school company must take place after the current contract has ended. If SEC ceased to be a member of Learn Sheffield, any further commissions to Learn Sheffield would be a direct award and would instead need to be managed within the usual procurement process. The purpose of the proposal is to enable Sheffield City Council to continue to support and challenge schools more effectively to achieve that aim. There's been consultation with Learn Sheffield and with the school forum. In terms of equality, there would be better coordination and integrated school improvement services with other services provided by the council, which would help in improving schools. Improved schools would be better equipped to support better incomes of a diverse range of pupils, which would support improved longer term outcomes. In terms of financial and commercial implications, options one and two would require Sheffield City Council to secure additional funding, which is at this point not available. If option three is agreed, the Learn Sheffield contract would end and Sheffield City Council would fulfil the core school improvement activities as described in section three. In terms of alternate options considered, the council must make suitable arrangements to deliver statutory services to maintained schools following the end of the grant funding period and the options are detailed as before in power grasp 1.15 and 1.23 above. So the reasons for the recommendations are development option three will allow Sheffield City Council to move towards delivering services directly to its maintained schools, rather. This will enable the council to make more effective use of significantly reduced resource, know its schools better, allocate limited resources more appropriately, build stronger relationship with school leaders and governors and ensure a support and challenging intervention is better matched to need and provided in a more timely way, better coordinate and integrate school improvement services with other services provided by the council such as inclusion and send and have more confidence they are fulfilling their core school improvement activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Does anyone have any questions? So I've got councillor Ross and councillor Garbutt. Councillor Ross.
Thank you for the report. As you know, over many years, I've been a great supporter of the concept of Learn Sheffield, starting in 2010 with establishment of a Sheffield family of schools. And I'm absolutely committed to maintaining some organisation that keeps all the schools, whether they be maintained, faith, academies and the colleges, in one body talking to each other because to the public out there, they're not academies or faith schools or whatever, they are Sheffield schools and we must maintain that concept of the Sheffield family of schools. Now, I think there's been some misconceptions about this report and I'm just seeking to underline the fact that because of this report and the options available, Learn Sheffield will still continue to exist. And I just want to say that in words of one syllable. We are not ending Learn Sheffield here because I'd go to the barricades if we were. However, we've still got to work hard to make sure that all schools feel that there is some value in Learn Sheffield and you'd say 90%, using traded services. I'm disappointed with 90%. I'd like it to be 100% of schools are committed in some ways to Learn Sheffield and the whole concept of the Sheffield family of schools. When we've been briefed about this paper, I've raised my concerns and disappointments, but I am faced with the reality of the situation that in fact, option three, the narrow range of option, but option three is the only alternative because the important element in the whole Learn Sheffield are the schools and colleges themselves. And basically, and I'm just wanting this to be reiterated by you, Kevin, that's what they said wants to happen, option three, given that we haven't got any alternative funding. And I do, so reassurance, you know, underlying, Learn Sheffield will continue to exist. What we're going to do to ensure that we get 100% of schools contributing in some way and in trade services and outline just how the council is still going to be working with Learn Sheffield and therefore the schools in a number of ways because I want to make it very clear to the public watching and people out there that we are not walking away from this, that we are still committed to supporting all schools, whatever they flagged or badged under in Sheffield and working with them in a positive way over the coming years and maintaining this concept of the Sheffield family of schools.
Just absolutely to reiterate that fact, Learn Sheffield will not cease to exist. There's absolutely no doubt about it and they will continue as a traded model across the city. In my contact with them, with schools, head teachers, there was no sense of there being a general pull away from Learn Sheffield at all. There was a real sense of its value and its benefit across the whole school system and I have every confidence that schools will continue to engage without any doubts whatsoever. And in education and skills and children and families, we're absolutely committed to working in the future in partnership with Learn Sheffield. There's absolutely no doubt about that.
Councillor Garbutt.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much for the report. I've got a number of questions, but I'll start with this one. How do we rate how effective Learn Sheffield is? Is it effective? Has it, you know, has it done a good job in the past? And how will we be able to continue keeping an eye on that, shall we say? Making sure that it's still doing a good job, if it is doing a good job? Bearing in mind what the reasons for the recommendations are, if it is doing a good job, the reasons for the recommendations seem to suggest that we can do better. I'll leave it there for the moment, but I may well come back at some stage.
Andrew, would you like to put me on that?
Thank you very much. So the, because it is a contract with Learn Sheffield that is managed through a contract management process and regular meetings are held with Learn Sheffield and officers of the council and key performance indicators and other aspects of their contracts are managed through that. And if I answer this way, I'm not aware that we've raised any significant concerns about their past performance, councillor Garbutt. I think that answers in a slightly more roundabout way, but we haven't had previous concerns about their performance. The key issue is, is that the government nationally has withdrawn the grant that we normally use to actually fund our commission for Learn Sheffield. And although we might have, I suppose, reviewed the commission from time to time and even reviewed its purpose and how we wanted to operate that in future, the removal of the grant by the government has actually provided a hard stop and a position in time where it's not possible to actually continue to actually fund that without alternative means of funding it, which would either have to be from de-delegating school budgets. We've consulted schools through the schools forum and they've said that they're willing to do that until August 23, but not from September 23, which is where then they want it to become, to become fully traded. And although Kevin has been very clear about the lack of alternative funding to do anything different from that, in reality, for us to continue the contract as is, the council would be looking, would have to be looking for something circa £400,000 at a time and obviously the committee is aware that we've been looking for other savings as well. So I hope that that answered the question, councillor Garbutt.
The second part of my question was how will the council be keeping an eye in the future, once August 23 has passed, on how Learn Sheffield is carrying out its duties? Whether or not there is some audit mechanism in place to make sure that it's still up to scratch, shall we say?
I think we regard and treat it as a piece of partnership work. We would very much want to continue to work with Learn Sheffield to seek their guidance and support on a number of issues where that is possible. But in reality, the contract for Learn Sheffield will become a contract that's individually undertaken by each school and academy in the city. And I take councillor Ross's point in particular about wanting to continue to increase and improve the number of schools and academies who take up the traded offer. In fairness, the 91% I think it is now is actually the highest subscription that Learn Sheffield have achieved since their inception and the launch of their traded, their currently part traded model. So I think contractually, councillor Garbutt, it would be difficult to put things in place except on a voluntary basis, but I would hope that through a partnership arrangement because we also still operate and work in that sphere. We hold a large amount of data ourselves around schools and academies and I think we'd want to see an exchange and a close working relationship with them, which I think would also include, in essence, a check on either side, how we're both doing, how might we improve things in the future. But it would have to be on a partnership basis rather than a contractual basis.
Thank you. Councillor Holmshaw.
Thank you, Chair. What's new to me today is, or pretty much in the last few days since I've had the written report, is about information on the consultation and really kind of the lack of information on the consultation and how Learn Sheffield and the schools forum have been engaged and involved with the consultation. So really what I find is that Learn Sheffield and also the schools forum aren't really part of this report and I want more than that when I get a report, I want some more detail. So could you tell me, please, Kevin, about this and about the consultation and what formed part of that consultation?
Andrew, do you want to hear that and Mark?
So Mark will come in on the schools forum shortly, but in relation to the schools forum, there was actually a written exercise that consulted every maintained school in Sheffield and Mark will tell you the response rate on that shortly. That took place earlier in the year. And also there were then, there'd been a series of meetings. We regularly talk to head teachers about this in our regular head teacher breakfast meetings that they come in and have with senior officers from my team as well as part of that. In relation to Learn Sheffield's consultation through the regular contract management meetings and also the separate opportunities as well to discuss the development of the contract, that's where Learn Sheffield have had their voice as part of that. But in fairness, it's like any other commercial contract, you would do it through that mechanism rather than have them as a consulting. But Mark, do you want to just come in in terms of the response?
Thank you, Andrew. So the decision by the national government was made sometimes in November 2021 where they decided that the grant was coming to an end. So we went to the school forum, shared the information and as Andrew said, we put out a consultation for each school to respond and gave them three choices. The choices are as listed in the paper was, do the schools want to pay for Learn Sheffield from their own budget on an ongoing basis? And the second option was, would they consider that Learn Sheffield moves towards a traded model? Following that consultation, responses from individual school, overwhelmingly the schools were in the favour of moving towards a traded model from August 23. And what they suggested was in the interim, they were happy to pay for Learn Sheffield from their own budget because the government had decided to stop the funding. So that was, the existing provision was put in place as an interim gap and from August 23, the majority of the schools agreed that they will move towards a traded model. What that implies is schools are still saying they will pay for it, but they want to have that relationship directly with Learn Sheffield rather than through arrangement that we will put together. So Learn Sheffield can trade with them and schools will buy their services.
Is that all right, councillor Holmshaw?
Yes, to some extent. It's just it's not within the paper and, you know, when something is missing, you have to explore that and find out more about it, so.
Sarah, would you like to come in from a legal perspective, please? Sarah, would you like to come in from a legal perspective, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think I would just stress, Chair, that at this stage, the service is seeking permission to continue to develop option three, so they are saying option three is their preferred option, but they're not asking you to decide to definitely commit to that at this stage, they're asking you to give them permission to do some further engagement. So there are aspects of deciding to refer with option three that will need further engagement, further consultation, and I'm sure that when the report comes back in February, some of that will be reflected.
Counselor Homshaw.
Yeah, I like that word engagement, I think that's an important word, because I think it's needed within, to move beyond consultation into engagement is the right way that this should be dealt with, I think. And I'm also gratified to hear that actually we're not completely signing off on this, we are saying this is a way that perhaps the council can go forward, but we need more strategic responses from members of the Schools Forum before that can happen, at least I would be expecting that.
Thank you, Counselor Homshaw, that's one of the recommendations in the paper. Andrew?
I think it's due to go back to Schools Forum in either January or February, isn't it, Mark?
So it is going as a verbal update to the Schools Forum tomorrow. The reason we're doing a verbal update was we were not sure of the outcome of the discussion today, so Kevin will be sharing with the Schools Forum the process of this discussion and get a steer back from the forum. And we will come back, what kind of reaction we get from the forum tomorrow.
Thank you, Mark. And just for members, I am normally at the Schools Forum, but it happens to clash with full council tomorrow, so I won't be at the forum, I'll be at full council. Counselor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Actually, my question has been answered by Sarah and Andrew, that was something I was going to ask Andrew, so thank you, it's been answered now, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Counselor Garbutt.
Thank you. I'm not quite sure of the circumstances where schools go over budget or go into the red. At what point does either Learn Sheffield or Sheffield City Council have any responsibility for that? And if we do go down the route three model, how will that be affected?
Mark?
So I think the schools, as a part of the maintained sector, we have got a responsibility as a local authority to keep an eye on their budgets, we have got a fairly well structured process of engaging with school, if they go in red or if they've got surpluses, we review that on an ongoing basis. That responsibility does not sit with Learn Sheffield, that self sets with the local authority. We review that on a monthly basis, and if there are issues in terms of deficit, we will engage, work out a deficit recovery plan with the school, agree a cash flow loan. So there are arrangements in place where we monitor what's happening with each school. There are a number of schools in deficit, and we have an ongoing relationship with those schools to make sure they are coming back into black.
That's for maintained schools, what about academies? Is there any arrangement for them?
We, the local authority, don't have any financial accountability when it comes to academies, academies are directly responsible to Secretary of State, but we will keep an eye on the general state of affairs within Academy Sector, but we don't have any accountability to Academy Sector.
Will Learn Sheffield at any point have any responsibility for that?
There is no formal legal accountability to Learn Sheffield by academies, academies are directly reporting to Secretary of State, so there is no, they might have a role in terms of working with them, but no financial accountability through Learn Sheffield.
Thank you. You want to come back, Counselor Garbutt, or?
I have another question.
Yeah, and then I'll ask mine.
Okay. There are certain services that are given in kind, such as data provision and crisis communication, I think it amounts to about £115,000, and reading the report, those will continue, am I right in that first?
I think the services are continuing, the budgets is available, I think the issue would be who delivers it and how, that will be part of the discussion we will have to have.
So that hasn't been settled yet?
I think that's part of exploring option three.
Okay. Those are services that, obviously Sheffield City Council is best placed to carry out. So would those services then be charged out to schools that would take advantage of them?
I think because we, as a local authority, well, the cost of running those services is self-paid from dedicated school grant, we will not be trading those services with school, because the school system is already paying for that, we were offering that service to Learn Sheffield as in kind, so I think on that basis, we will not be charging school if those services continue, which is likely to happen, that those services will continue without any charge to school.
So on that point, it just comes back to Counselor Ross's point earlier about why Learn Sheffield exists and its predecessor, the citywide learning body, why we set those up, which was to ensure that actually Sheffield children attending Sheffield schools and academies are all supported by the council regardless of what kind of institution they sit in. So for example, in relation to data analysis, we are best placed to actually provide that to schools and academies, we currently do that through providing it as a service in kind to Learn Sheffield, and then they disseminate that out to schools. But going back to the 10% of schools who don't subscribe to Learn Sheffield, they don't receive some of that data services, so in developing option three, it would be my preference to actually widen the number of schools who actually receive the data analysis directly from the council. So it's definitely not a proposal to cease that, and we would want to explore how we can widen that to make it more equitable for all children in all schools and academies regardless of their status.
Thank you, Andrew. If I just ask my name, is that all right, and then I'll bring you in, Counselor Homshaw? Yeah. On option three, it says that Sheffield City Council would fulfil the core school improvement activities. How, I'm under the impression that that is what Learn Sheffield are currently doing and the council, how would the council, do we have capacity to bring that back in? And if we do, who and how would that happen, please?
It's not a large range of activity, that, but for example, we have statutory duties in relation to the oversight of statutory assessment processes in schools, and we do that on behalf of the FE, we discharge that to Learn Sheffield to do that. So some of that will be brought back in, we believe that we do have the existing capacity in education and schools, where Kevin is director, we've added to that capacity recently as well as part of that, so we do believe we're having.
Thank you. Counselor Homshaw.
Yes, can I ask, when might this be coming back to committee? Oh, have we not quite decided that? But also, secondly, when it does come back to committee, that we have a more detailed report on engagement with Learn Sheffield and the Sheffield Forum as part of it?
Andrew, Kevin?
I'm actually looking to Fiona, because I'm not quite sure when he's down on the forward plan, but it'll certainly be after the process of paid at the Schools Forum, Mark.
I think we'll go to the Forum tomorrow, and then I think we will have the follow-up Forum meeting in February, so I think depending on the work plan, we can definitely make sure we have that discussion with Forum and their engagement is captured within the next update back to the committee.
So we'll have a look at the work programme, make sure it's probably on from March, April. Yeah, is that okay? Mark?
My last comment would be, you know, the consultation that was scattered out previously with Forum, those papers are public papers through the Forum, so what I would suggest is, we can actually make a link available to the committee on the consultation and the Forum papers from last year as well.
Great, thank you.
If you could, please.
Yep, can you forward those on then, Mark, and we can get those out with the minutes? That'd be great, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, so the recommendation is that the Education Children and Families Policy Committee note the work currently undertaken by Learn Sheffield, the changes in government guidance and the decision taken by Schools Forum regarding funding for school improvement, to endorse further work being undertaken to develop option three, noting the risk areas and mitigations needed if the commission ceases or if significantly changed, to note that circumstances that would require Sheffield City Council to resign as the supervising authority of the school company, and agree to seek agreement from School Forum to de-delegate funds from school budgets to provide a service co-created with school leaders. Such agreements would come into effect should option three ultimately be agreed by the committee at a further date. Are we all in agreement with the recommendation? Any dissent? Agreed? Agreed, thank you, that's agreed. Okay, thank you, Kevin, thank you, Mark. At this point, what I would like to ask is, everyone warm enough? And if you are all really cold, if you would like to take a break at any point, please let me know, and if you'd like to move around and get a warm drink, especially officers sat over there, because you look freezing. So yeah, if you let me know, then we might be able to just take a quick comfort break if anyone's a little bit too cold. So are you all all right for now? Okay, so next item on the agenda is item number nine, the early years start for life in Sheffield strategy, 2023 to 2028, and Jo Horrabin is presenting. Thank you, Jo.
Thank you, good afternoon. My name's Jo Horrabin, I'm the Director of Integrated Commissioning, and I'm presenting this report on behalf of my team and the work done by Marie McGreevy in this area. The purpose of the report is quite straightforward, I think, it's just to request that the committee note our intention to develop a new five-year early years strategy for the city to support Sheffield's young families to reach their potential. We have, we are in the final year of the existing strategy, and we have considered whether a simple refresh would suffice, but actually there have been quite a lot of changes, some of them quite significant, in the area of early years and in this space, and therefore we feel it's really quite important that we have a completely renewed strategy. We are therefore really just giving, bringing this to the committee for your attention, and because there's an opportunity, obviously, for the committee to take part in how we shape and form that strategy over the next few months. The strategy itself will then be brought back to this committee for final sign-off, and it will be from 2023 to 2028, so it'll be a further five-year strategy. We've had some really successful events already, in October, we had a fantastic event, an early years event where we had great attendance, and that's given us a lot of key themes, really, that we want to look at as part of the new strategy. So there are some particular changes that we want to make sure are reflected, so changes to the early years foundation stage, the new infant mental health pathway development, which has been ongoing from the start of this year. There are changes around maternal cultural safety developments, again, ongoing at the moment, which we all want to reflect and incorporate. The strategy will be led by early years and early health commissioning colleagues, but it will absolutely engage parents and partners from across the whole of the early years system, including early years childcare providers and our health partners. And after the consultation, it'll be a priority in terms of development of action plans and progressing activities, with oversight via a governance structure aligned to family hubs and start for life within the overarching governance structure for children and young people, so there will be a clear line of accountability for the delivery of the strategy. So I'm recommending to the committee that you note that we wish to develop the strategy, and I'm happy to take any questions or thoughts.
Are there any questions from members? Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, thanks, Jo, thanks for the report. Just a query from me, a question. Given the pandemic and what happened with children at that stage, particularly those that didn't experience, like a lot of our children, pre-nursery and then nursery, and the issues that then came to light as a result of that for a lot of our youngsters, and that following through with them into their nursery and then infant and junior classes, I just wonder whether that's all been taken into account in this new policy, and some of the catch-up that we need to do is also included, but not just on a practical basis, but also a financial basis, because I know in some of the less prosperous areas, shall we say, in Sheffield, that not only have those children been put back a substantial amount of years in their learning, but it seems to be far more difficult for them to be progressing and catching up in terms of where they should be at at certain ages and certain development stages. So I just wonder, and I'm sure it has, but I just wonder if you could just go through some of the details of how we're going to do with that work, but in those particular areas of Sheffield as well, please, thank you.
Absolutely. I think that it's a very, it's a very serious point that you make, the impact of the pandemic was, or has been, continues to be really, a huge impact on some of our young people in the city, and you're right, that, you know, it would seem that this has exacerbated inequalities that already existed in the city. So the early years strategy work will absolutely need to take that into account, and it's really important that that strategy is jointly developed with colleagues in education, health, primary care includes it in that, and certainly our ICB colleagues will be part of our strategy development. I think tackling inequalities is an absolute priority, obviously, for the council, and it is probably the greatest window of opportunity that we have for our children and people and our, you know, future adults of this city, is to act early and appropriately with the right intervention. So the strategy will look at both the, well, we will look at the whole spectrum of support and interventions, including targeted support. I think we have to be really upfront and honest as a city about the fact that we have such significant inequalities across the city, and our approach needs to directly address that and own that inequality, both in terms of socio-economic inequalities, but also in terms of the findings of the Race Equality Commission, and in order to address other inequalities that we know are in the city.
Thank you. Counselor Garbutt.
Thank you. I suppose, following on from that, I was listening this morning to the head of Ofsted, who was commenting on the explosion in the number of EHC plans being needed, and I'm just thinking that the early years is a real basis for setting a good educational standard. So I'm, again, I'm assuming that this has been taken into account in how you're going to be moving forward, that doesn't then give rise to, you know, more EHC plans being necessary.
Thank you. Yes, I've picked up on some of those comments via Twitter rather than hearing on the radio this morning, but yes, absolutely, we have seen, and our next item will pick this up, we have seen a huge increase and we see a continued trajectory in terms of the increase in the number of EHCP plans, not just in this city, but nationally and regionally. And I think the early identification of needs is really, really important, and that transition stage into school is a key area that we will be paying attention to in terms of school readiness and supporting the child and family through transition into school, so that actually they get the best, the best crack at going into primary. Absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Ross?
Thank you. I mean, at this stage, we've just been asked to note that you're developing policy, and it strikes me, this is an interesting challenge for the new committee system, because previously under scrutiny, a part of scrutiny function was in policy development. And I think I'm probably speaking on behalf of the whole committee, that, yeah, we want to still pick up that bit in policy development, and at some future point, we'd want an input in here. in here. Because it's, it's blindingly obvious that a good start in life carries on through not just the child's education, but into adult life. If you look at the levels of literacy and numeracy in the adult prison population, you can trace it right back to a poor start in life. I mean, I visited the primary school a few years ago where 58 of its 60 intake were below their chronological age in terms of development and that impedes their development. They're playing catch-up right through their life and it's reflected in GCSEs and even A-levels at, at, at the time. So if we can get this right, we will, most importantly, give each youngster the best start in, in life, but also actually it reduces pressure on the whole system going right through education, youth service, antisocial behaviour, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all, all the way through. So it's something that I think we should concentrate on. And as well as bringing reports to committee, I'm sure this committee, this policy committee will want to have some in-depth workshops on this so we can have a, a fuller contribution than, than we can always make at, at a, at a, at a committee stage. I think that was more of a comment than a question, but do you agree?
Absolutely. Yeah. And I think this is why we wanted to bring this and, and it is also as officers exploring the new committee structure and how we, we optimise the opportunities really for the widest possible engagement. So yes, I'd be very happy to, to run some workshops for members of this committee and other members who have an interest, you know, or a particular passion in this area. And we have also had this discussion at the Health and Wellbeing Board as well because we're really wanting to see the Health and Wellbeing Board have more focus on children and young people. So it's just to, to let committee know that we have, you know, we are broadening out our, our engagement as, as far as possible really, because this has to be a whole system informed piece of work. So health are really interested as well in, in this because clearly, as you've very well articulated, councillor Ross, this, this is about, you know, this saves the whole system, never mind the outcomes for the child, the young person, their family, their future family. So it absolutely is the time to, to get, to get to it right.
Thank you. Anybody think we were discussing show start programme, aren't they? Councillor Lee.
Yeah, I will absolutely agree with what councillor Ross has said about everything starting at, you know, at that, at day one and everything that we do after that is, will predict our outcome, whether it's at school, early years, when we start school, when we start secondary school, when we start work and what happens to those children as they grow into adults. And then what happens to a community and a city if, if we don't get this right and he's, you know, and you can just look across Sheffield and see how unequal it is from one end of the city to another end of the city. So it's absolutely, you know, if we, we absolutely do need to get this one right. And I think it's very hard and let's not kid ourselves that it's going to be, you know, we just get the right interventions in place and it'll be unkey dory because there's so many things that impact on a family and impact on a child that we may sometimes never know about. We don't, we don't really know that. So I think, you know, we have to do our absolute best. And I just wondered, you know, so having said all that, which you know anyway, but you know, it's, it's, it is so important, isn't it? It's so important for every one of us here, you know, me, and we know what's going on to everybody in the city. I just wondered, you know, you've talked about consulting, consulting with all sorts of organisations and parents as well, but how, how, how deeply do you involve parents and to what extent, you know, what groups of parents are included in the, in the consultation? Because I sometimes think parents don't know always what they should be demanding and what they should expect. You know, you're doing one, some people know exactly what they should demand and what they should expect and other, other parents maybe don't know. So how, how do we raise those, those expectations?
I absolutely agree. There is, there are inequalities of, of ask as well across the city and we need to take account of that when we are consulting. And I think, I think it's a really good challenge that we need to, to be really creative and go to where parents are, reach parents in the, you know, in places that they feel comfortable and secure and, and work with organisations that they already know and trust in order to have that dialogue about what, what more might, might make a difference for them in their particular circumstances and their particular context. And it will vary, no doubt, around the city and it will vary within different communities. I think the, our, our plan is to ensure that we, we consult as widely as possible and I'm really happy to, to bring another paper, you know, to bring further information forward to committee members either formally through here or to, you know, as part of the workshops so that you can see what, you know, the detail of those proposals and those plans and, and have a, and, and challenge us really if you think that we are missing any, any possibilities because absolutely we need to, we need to stimulate the demand for the right things in the right places. And if people don't know what the, what the art of the possible might be for them and their child, then they won't know to ask for it. You're absolutely right.
Councillor Garbutt and councillor Murphy.
Thanks. Wearing a different hat from this committee hat. I, I work on the Police and Crime Panel. I'm, I'm very concerned about the amount of domestic abuse there is. This directly affects young people in those families. So I don't know if you've got any, any comments to make about how this Start For Life in Sheffield strategy might start to deal with that.
Yes, absolutely. We know that domestic abuse and violence in the home is, is, has a huge impact on children and young people and is very often unseen, but has ramifications for, for children witnessing that or caught up in that very long term. And within my integrated commissioning service, we also have the Domestic Abuse Team funded in part by Police and Crime Commissioner and by, by OHED and Public Health. So we have, we have really good links within, within my service and we will ensure that we get that, that read across and that we are optimising the access to the, to the right services and that we've got that, that, that flow of commission, good commissioning intelligence about the needs and demands of different communities and particularly for, for young children.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just wanted to follow on from my colleague's statement and question councillor Lee because thought it was really well made, but it also made me think about consultation with the wider family networks and groups and particularly grandparents who I know have a lot of input into bringing up their grandchildren often, you know, taking them to school, doing some of their homework with them, reading to them, et cetera, et cetera. And yet they're often left out of the consultation, if you like, with future work plan, but, but also carers as well and particularly foster carers. I know that they are included in a lot of the schoolwork, but they're often, they often don't get the time and the opportunities to do the, the level of work that's often needed with the type of children that they're caring for. So extra support is often needed as well for those little ones who are in that kind of situation. And I just wondered if, if that's part of the consultative process and work that you'll be carrying out as well. Thanks, Chair.
I think that's a really, a really good point and I've made it, I've been making a few notes as, as we've gone along and this is exactly the kind of conversation that we were, we were hoping to have. So I think the point about grandparents and that wider family and community network is really, is really important and, and we will absolutely be looking at how we can get out, as I say, to where, where people are and the, the groups and, and networks that they, that they, that they access and, and are meaningful to them. And I think your point about foster carers is, is, is a really pertinent one as well. So I will talk to my team and we'll make sure that we, you know, we, we identify routes to, to reach those foster carers who, as you say, have a huge amount on their plates already. So we'll need to think carefully about how we, how we engage with them appropriately.
Thank you. I'm just going to take the chair for a minute and just make a few comments if that's okay, Jo. I think on behalf of members here, since we started this committee in May, we've had lots of different meetings, looking at lots of different areas across the portfolio, committee or whatever we call it these days, with regards to alternative provision, education, apprenticeships, youth crime, all that sort of thing. And just reiterating on what colleagues have said, everything always comes back to the early years. And I think as Sheffield, I think we've always really been striving to ensure that our early years are invested in despite the government's position on, on underfunding early years. And I think it's really important that we have got those partnerships with the ICB. And for those watching who don't know what the ICB is, it's the Integrated Care Board, which used to be the clinical, the CCG, which was the Clinical Commissioning Group. I think it is really important that we do get that, that input in front from them, from health as well. I think with regards to the consultation as such, we've got decades of experience in Sheffield with partners. There's research at the universities, there's voluntary and community sector research, there's lots of research being done around the whole household approach to this sort of work. I mean, I would like to know that that, that existing research is going to be used rather than us trying to reinvent the wheel where we've already got the knowledge that we would be able to bring that in as well, rather than going out and doing more consultation, asking the same questions as what other organisations have been, have been asking our families as well. And I think again, with regards to this being cross-committee, you know, we, at the moment, our, our work is kind of spread across. So no matter where, where this ends up, where, where this strategy ends up and what comes out of it, I think it is really important, as councillor Ross and other colleagues have said today, that this does come back and that we are involved because it, there is an interest for all of our young people, no matter what age they, they, they are. So thank you for that. Does anyone else have any other questions regarding this report? Councillor Lee.
Yeah. We just, well, I was, I was just thinking about the, the LAX and their, how they might be involved in, in this. You know, we're going through governance review at the moment. We had a meeting this morning with the LAX chairs on the governance arrangements and how we interact with committees. And it's, it's, it's very difficult and maybe we don't interact as much as we should do. And we're all learning. We're all going back to the future almost and we're learning our committees work, aren't we? And, and given that this is the first year, we'll, everybody's got an excuse, you know, to not get it right just yet. So I just think we've got to really think, because LAX are there to empower and enable the local community. So how are we going to be involved in this, seeing as some of these services might be in our area? Services might want to come to LAX for, not that we've got any funding at the moment, but, you know, there are wardpots and you never know in the future, we might get funding. But how? I think we need, you need to come to the, to, to explore that with the local area committees, I think.
Absolutely. I, I agree. And yeah, again, really, really useful challenge and I've noted that down. I think you're absolutely right. We do need to think about how we empower through, through the local area committees, you know, and, and how we optimise their, that reach in, in communities. So yes, absolutely. That's, thank you for that. We will make sure we cover that as well.
Thank you. Are there any more comments on this? Okay. So the recommendation is for the Education Children and Families Committee to endorse the proposal to develop a new early years strategy for 23 to 28, endorse the new title of the strategy of Start For Life in Sheffield. And this new title is in line with the National Developments Within Family Hubs Programme and was supported by attendees at the early years event in October 2022, which I had the privilege of opening and met lots of our workers from across Sheffield and it was a fantastic event. Thank you for that. So are we all in agreement with the recommendations? Agreed? Thank you very much. Thanks, Jo.
Thank you. I'm going to stay and invite colleagues to come up if that's right for the next items.
Okay. Is everybody okay to carry on? Are we warming off? Okay. Thank you. So item number 10 is the Special Educational Needs and Disability Sufficiency Briefing. And I understand this is Matthew.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just briefly talk through the briefing that's been provided to the committee and then we can obviously have a conversation about any queries and things. So just in terms of the briefing, the purpose of the report is to provide a briefing to committee on the special educational needs and disability sufficiency position. In doing this, we're providing opportunity for the committee to highlight any issues and also develop its engagement in this space. An item on the refresh sufficiency plan itself is on the agenda for January. Our approach to this work is similar to that of our mainstream education commissioning colleagues we're working closely with. It's important to note that the overarching strategy in this area is the inclusion strategy and that this activity is linked to that wider area of work. So just, just in terms of the headlines from the report, we are forecasting continued pressure for send places across all settings. As we've already touched upon, you know, this isn't unique to Sheffield, it is an issue that we are seeing nationally. We are seeing continued high demand, particularly relating to autism and mental health needs. As noted in the briefing, Sheffield has particularly high need relating to autism compared to other areas. We also know that we need to do more to support mainstream inclusion of our school partners and that is one of our priorities at the moment. It's also important to note that there has been significant activity in this space over the past few years. This includes an increase in special school places of around 20% since 2018, increasing integrated resource places from around 225 to 300 since 2019, opening a new special school this year with another due to be opened in 2024. And we have also increased our investment into mainstream schools. However, our forecast indicates that we will need to be doing more in the coming years. To respond to this, we are working with parents, carers, schools and other partners to develop and deliver long-term sustainable solutions and that is a real kind of focus at the moment. Now, there are many areas to sufficiency, but in the briefing, we've highlighted three areas. So supporting greater mainstream inclusion, free schemes, integrated resources where children with special educational needs are placed in mainstream but receive additional support. We are also looking to deliver a controlled growth in special school places over the next five years to respond to that need. And we're also looking at how we can increase and improve our post-16 provision and support young people successfully into adulthood. In the plan itself, we'll also be highlighting intentions in other areas, for example, early years and school readiness, which will link back to the, you know, the item we just talked about. So just in terms of the asking committee, we're asking committee to note the briefing and highlight any issues for consideration. This will then be fed into the work that we're doing. We're asking committee to make decisions as required in the future on special needs sufficiency. So the item we brought in September on the special school bid was an example of this. As identified in the forward plan, we will then return in January with the draft plan itself. And the intention for that plan is to then publish it as an appendix to the inclusion strategy, which this, this work is part of. So I'll stop there for any questions or queries. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from members? Councillor Murphy then councillor Lee.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for that. Again, just a concern from me that I can't see noted anywhere. It's been raised on several occasions, I think, children who have got SCND issues and their transition from junior school to senior schools and the breakdown often of that progress that they've made, significant progress, progress often that they make in junior school. And that doesn't just include their education progress, it includes their friendships and their, their social coming togethers with, with their friends, et cetera. And the breakdown of that when they move and the transition for them when they move into senior schools, just a big concern for, for us as a committee and being raised several times about. and being raised several times about how we we improve that for the children with this type of special educational need and that they don't get lost again within yet another bigger uh system that isn't really providing them with the level of care and support that they need within that big system. And that for us, it 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 almost appears that the teachers within that system don't fully understand a lot of the children coming into their uh workspace and their needs. And so they they quickly, the child, children quickly get lost within that. So just some, I suppose, reassurance about how we're going to make that and improve that and just make it better for those young people in particular. Like, thank you.
Uh, no, I think we, um, yes, that is a key issue, particularly, you know, all phases of transition, particularly primary to secondary transition. Uh, you know, we do see increased, you know, increased numbers of children moving into more specialist provisions at that point. Um, so that is that is an area that we will capture as part of our work around mainstream inclusion, how we address that. Um, I think in terms of what we'd need to do in that space and what we'll think you out, I think some of that is around how we're working with our secondary schools and our academy trusts around supporting improved transition. Um, I think it's also work with our operational services in terms of processes such as annual reviews and how we're and how we're doing them. And we work closely with with education skills colleagues around that. So I think in the in the plan, we will, as you say, we'll need to spell that out more clearly to provide that reassurance. But I think it is a combination of that strategic work with our secondary partners um to support transition from their from their primary feeder schools. Um, and also think about how do we improve kind of the day to day work, Jo? I don't know if you'd want to add anything to that.
Thank you, Matt. Yes, we it is a key area of concern. And as you say, the committee has has raised this. Um, and as Matt, I would, you know, restate what Matt has has already said, but we um, we also have the S E N D Accelerated Progress Plan, which while it's had quite a focus in the initial stages on the transition to parent uh to parenthood, sorry, to from the on the transition to adulthood, um, actually, we want to be and we're committed to expanding out that that programme to address transitions at all phases. So that includes early years into primary and primary into secondary, because we know that that's, we touched on in the previous item as well, we know that those transition points are really, really challenging for for all children and particularly challenging for those who have perhaps some additional needs. And we know that that is a critical point for those children and those families. And we know that um schools are not always fully prepared, don't fully understand the needs of those children, aren't fully equipped to support them in the way that they might have been supported at their previous, you know, in their previous smaller setting. Um, so yeah, as Matt says, it is partly about how we work with our schools and and trusts and and partners in the city. It's also about how we work with health and education and and operational colleagues um to ensure that the whole system is pulling in the right direction and and supporting and focused on those critical transition points and that children aren't lost either in health terms, education terms, care and support terms.
Just throw something in there, which I get uh back quite a lot as a councillor, but also as a carer, that if the child hasn't got a relevant diagnosis, then there's no sort of account taken as to their needs, even though there's been handover from sort of primary school to senior school teaching. It's almost like that that child then starts afresh in that new placement. Um, and I just think that's really lazy practice. And I just think that sort of uh communication needs to go and and we need to be turning around and being very clear with people that come back at us with that sort of, well, they haven't got a diagnosis, therefore there's nothing extra we can do or support we can offer is just really bad practice. As a teacher, uh, that's not good enough for our kids. And I think we should be throwing that back at the schools and particularly the the seniors in the schools to ensure that no teacher uses that sort of terminology or excuse to not provide some extra support or input into a child that has clearly got some kind, some level of extra need. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I I think that that is a really good point. And um, we know that um, we we know that um, that there is um, a a pressure within the system to seek an EHCP as a as a means to of to access or to have a, you know, a statement of need and in order to access, yeah, um, funds, support, et cetera. And um, it 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 shouldn't be that you have you have to chase, you have to seek that if if it's not absolutely, if it's not absolutely necessary. If you have the right support at the right time in the right way, um, you know, I think we would reduce demand on the more and more specialist services. But the key is that timely and um, um timeliness and continuity of of support. And, you know, as as you say, a child not having to start all over again, having perhaps taken most of their primary school life to establish trusting relationships. So I, yeah, I absolutely take your point. And and that is part of our our thinking is is how to reduce the demand is to get it right at the beginning.
Thank you. Councillor Lee?
Yeah, thanks. Um, thank you for this one. Um, I was just reading on about the in Sheffield, forty nine percent of children with an educational healthcare plan are in special schools versus the national average of thirty four percent. So I I'd obviously we don't want to, we want to change that. And and further on, it says, it talks about having high rates of um young people with autism and people, young people with um health, mental health, emotional and mental health needs, there's a higher rate in Sheffield. And I just wondered, what is all that about? And is it is it to do with just diagnosis? Or is it to do with what we've just been talking about, early years and not getting it right at, you know, from naught to five? Um, and also, you know, you talk, when when children go into a special school, they are then um, they are separated from their community to somewhere, their community peers, I'm talking about the kids they play with in an area, they in their own locality, they're they're separated to some degree because they're in a some kind of special educational school, which doesn't, that carries, sometimes maybe carries a stigma. So just, yes, question and comments, I suppose.
Yeah. Um, in terms of the the high the high rates of autism in Sheffield, and for myself and Jo were talking about just before, we don't, there's multiple theories as to why we've got a higher rate of autism. And to be honest, we don't fully understand it. And it's a piece of work we need to do with our ICB colleagues to to unpick why Sheffield has a higher rate of autism, because, you know, it is high versus cool cities, statistical neighbours. Um, we do have the the Right Gate Centre, which is a specialist diagnostic centre. So, you know, there's there's an element there about perhaps we're very good at spotting it and good at identifying it in Sheffield versus other areas. But, you know, there's competing theories and we need to, it's a piece of work we've talked about and need to do with with health colleagues to unpick that further. Um, I don't know, Jo, whether you want to to act lines as a joint commissioner.
No, I I think Matt's Matt has has covered it really. There is further work we want to do. And um, our work, our multi agency work through the SEND Accelerated Progress Plan has really started to bring us together as as professionals at a particular, at a particular level. And actually, the more we come together and look at how we best intervene, the clearer it is that we can really make a difference to the outcomes for children and young people by by acting early and acting effectively in a multi agency way where we're not thinking in silos, well, this is the bit that I can do, this is my bit of the system. So I think there are um, there are impacts that we can have by working differently and better. Um, and, you know, there is work for us to do to understand what drives that high, our high, high rates. Um, and that needs to be multi agency, because I think there are probably, there are lots of theories, and I imagine there's a bit of truth in in many of them. So it's working through really um, and understanding how we can best support. Yep. And and in with regards to your, your first part of the question, just noting the high level of the high percentage of children in Sheffield who have an EHCP, who are in special school, absolutely, it is um, perhaps an indicator of of the, what we, what I was discussing before with you, which is that that pressure to seek a diagnosis, that pressure in the system to, you know, that pushes up the thresholds really and pushes children and families to seek more specialist support because they don't get what they need when they need it. And therefore, needs escalate and, you know, for the whole family often. So, yeah, I think with that's, that is something that we absolutely know we have to address. And we can't continue with that that kind of trajectory physically and practically, never mind financially in 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 the city. And it, we don't think it drives best outcomes.
Thank you. I've got councillor Garb. Oh, yeah, sorry, Mary.
I don't understand whether this is just, like you said, over diagnosis for whatever reason that, you know, or whether, I mean, is it totally dispersed across the city? So you've got same number of kids with diagnosed with autism from from all parts of the city? Um, you know, it it would be, you know, it's a good, it's a good piece of research for someone, isn't it, to do properly? We, and I'm sure, I'm sure there must be a lot of well found theories that are supported by evidence out there in the city, not just national.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, as 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 you said, I think it's a piece of work that we need to do to to understand further in terms of where the diagnosis is, what's driving it, and to try and pick it a bit more. Um, just just on the mainstream kind of inclusion point, the high, the rate of special schools, just just to add a bit more to that. So we are working closely with the mainstream sector to try and understand some of the issues there and try and turn some of that around. So we have the inclusion task force. Uh, we have sector lead to, you know, people in the school sector working with us around how we address that. Um, and I would say in Sheffield, we also have really good special schools. So there's probably an element of, you know, that that is a draw for parents in terms of seeing, actually, we've got some excellent special schools. So I think there's a multitude of factors there that we need to to work through with the system. Um, but it does, as Jo, as Jo said, we do need to change some of that because our trajectory recently hasn't, isn't sustainable in the long run, having that that rate of children going to special.
Thank you. Councillor Garb, please.
Thank you. Uh, points on on the last two points made, really. Um, I'll I'll go with the last one first. Um, historically, um, autism has been diagnosed much more quickly amongst young boys than it has young girls. I don't know what work you're doing on that and whether that's still the case. Um, but the other point I was going to make was was about what councillor Murphy was saying about the transition to secondary school. I used to be a secondary school teacher. And um, the best schools had no more than a file on special needs. They did no special training. They did no, you know, pre pre term, uh, um, you know, you come in, you do some training on which which pupils need which. The best schools didn't do that. The best schools, all they had was a file. Um, they have got different priorities. They have got different pressures. Um, but I don't think that's necessarily a good excuse. Um, so I think it would be a really good idea to see if they could be a, you know, a the last week before, you know, the holidays, if teachers could go in and and have a little bit of training on each of the um, the pupils in their care who are going to be needing special care and what's happened so far and and what they respond well to, those sorts of things. So I don't know if that that's come into your purview or not.
Um, thank you. And I I think probably it would be useful for us to um, bring further information back on on our inclusion task force, for example, and on the the work that that our colleagues in education and skills do with schools around that transition point because there will be people who are much closer to that work that will be able to speak to it far more eloquently and in more detail. Um, but it is a really good, you know, it is a really good point and 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 well made because, you know, you, commissioning can't happen in a in a bubble all by itself. It's about how the whole system behaves and how we all use all the levers on the system to the best effect. So, yeah, I'm sure if the committee would like that, then colleagues from Andrew's area and Kevin Kevin's area will be happy to bring that back.
Thank you. I was going to suggest that. Councillor Ross?
I'm actually a bit puzzled by some of the comments about transitioning schools um, from primary to secondary. Um, because it's not rocket science. I mean, I've been involved in this in the last century. We visited every primary school. We had notes on every single pupil about the friendship groups, whether or not they didn't have, you know, plans in those days, but were there any special characteristics we need to look out for? It's all paper and pen in those days. But, you know, it's, as I say, it's not rocket science to do that as the year seven tutor, you know, to to go out and be be prepared. Um, and I would hope that practice is actually enhanced these days. Because I know secondary schools I'm aware of do have the year sixes coming in, you know, when the year elevens have gone and so on, to familiarise themselves. So it should be easier to smooth out the transitions. Actually, that's not what I was going to comment upon, but it was picking up on councillor Lee's um issue really. Um, the pressure on places in spec special schools is because actually there are people, pupils in special schools who should be in mainstream. And there are pupils in mainstream who should be in special schools who can't get in because of the other way around. So a a very simple question to ask and a very difficult answer, how are we going to ensure that square pegs go in square holes and round pegs go in round holes?
Well, apparently, councillor Ross, it's in there. And I was going to ask exactly the same question.
Chair, can I can I just make a comment on that? Because I used to work in early years and children and adolescent mental health services many, many years ago. But some of the work that we actually had to do, obviously, was with the families as well. And often, some of the children that presented, like you say, uh, did not have special educational needs. However, it was quite clear with the family work that we did that some of the parents did. And they were also some of the parents that shouted the loudest in order to ensure that their children got into some of the special educational needs centres because it served them better than it did their children going to a uh secondary school. And that's always been the case. I'm talking thirty years ago when I worked in the children and young people's uh mental health services. Uh, so I'm sure that hasn't changed a great deal. But, you know, it doesn't answer all of your question or Mary's point about it. But there is a lot of misdiagnosis as well. And people will fight tooth and nail, parents will fight tooth and nail to try and get a diagnosis for their child.
I appreciate that, which is why my question was directed at the officers, what can we do to improve that situation?
Um, I'll have a go and and Matt can jump in if if he thinks I'm missing a trick. Um, uh, it is that it is a challenge. And I suppose this is for me what integrated commissioning is all about, is is saying, actually, there's a whole system challenge here. There are lots of moving parts or movable parts, and some are more movable than others. Um, and actually, I think we've, I think, um, you know, we've, we've just touched on part of this challenge, which is, this is part, it is partly about health, uh, and how health services have conversations with parents and how we work with parents and with health. It's about how schools work with health and we work with social care and how all of the agencies are um, are of a single mindset really about meeting that child's needs in the best way for that child. Um, rather than pushing, you know, pushing uh, a child or a family in in a direction of a diagnosis or a medical intervention because there isn't, you know, capacity to do the right thing in a school, for example. And I'm not saying that that's what happens. But um, we have to all be pulling in the same direction to make to make this change. And it's not an overnight change. So a child that's in special school and is established and and happy and and thriving in a special school is not a child we're going to think it's best to, you know, to to swap out. is not a child we're going to think it's best to, you know, to, to swap out. That's not the way that this has to work. We have to work over time to change this system. And, and therefore it's a case of looking in the short, medium and the longer term to, you know, how we, how we work with all the moving parts in this jigsaw. And no, it doesn't, it doesn't happen overnight and it isn't, it isn't easy. But that is the challenge we have to address. And I suppose, I do think that some of the recent working, multi-agency working that, certainly that I've been involved in, has, has made me feel a bit of fresh hope that actually we can, we can do that. And some of the pressures that the whole system is facing at the moment actually is, you know, necessity is the mother of invention. And I, and I think actually we are having different conversations now than perhaps in the past because there is so much pressure in the, in the system. And there's a realisation that no one part can, can solve this on their own.
But just, just to add to that, here's a, you know, a zinger of a question without a straightforward answer. I think just to add, you know, in terms of some of the work that we've done with parents and carers. So we work with the Parent Care Forum around trying to understand some of the issues here about why we've got, you know, children who could be in mainstream and special and vice versa. We do know part of that comes back to the, the work we need to do to improve provision in mainstream. Just as, as an example, we have, when we set up Integrated Resources, they're based around needs, not diagnosis. So if we have an integrated resource for children with communication interaction needs, we don't class those needs, have an autism diagnosis to access it. So it's more of that kind of activity. I do think it's probably a question we'd be best also discussing kind of further with our colleagues from Education and Skills. I'm thinking Rose is, is head of SEN, is doing a lot of work with the service around how we improve the processes around assessing need and all that kind of stuff, which I don't really want to comment the detail of because that's Rose's area. But we work closely with her on that. And there's probably, there's work around, you know, how we learn lessons in terms of the learners who have gone to different settings, who could have gone somewhere else. How do we unpick some of that and use that to inform our commissioning? So I, I don't think there's a straightforward answer to it today. But I think it's a topic we should, you know, revisit. And it is part of our, the work that we look at in terms of sufficiency is how do we try and get that right in terms of getting children going to the right settings? Because, you know, you're right, there are children in mainstream who could be in special and vice versa. So, yeah.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions from myself. Looking at, could you explain in more detail integrated resource places for people that may be watching and not understand that? Because more recently, while we've been doing some other work as a committee, we have looked at the offer across Sheffield and how different children from different parts of the city get a different experience depending on which schools they go to, whether they're in maintained or different academies. Because across the city, there's a different offer depending on which school you're at. And as part of this process, would, obviously working with Education and Skills team, would this be an opportunity for us to look at a Sheffield offer rather than an individual school offer? So that all children across Sheffield should expect a certain, you know, standard or access to certain services through their school, rather than it being a bit more of a lottery? Which what I find, I don't know about colleagues, but, you know, depending on where we are, our families, depending on where they go to school, get a different experience if their children have got special educational needs. And in addition to that, in here, it does advise that we want to create greater mainstream inclusion. Again, that I'm assuming that will depend on relationships with schools and what their offer's going to be and how they, what their intentions are when working with children with special educational needs. And it advises here that the refreshed plan will be published as an appendices to the Sheffield Inclusion Strategy. Do we have a timeline of when this committee can expect that back? And how can we be involved? What, what I don't really want to happen is for us to see it as a finished result rather than us be able to sort of, you know, be part of that process. I think would be really important to invite this whole committee and other members of the council, the re-elected members that are, again, have an interest in this. Could you let us know what the timeline on that would be?
Yeah. So a number of, a number of points in there. The, the equitable spread of integrated resource, I think, was, was one of the first points. And, and certainly that's something that we, that we, we want, we want to ensure. It is a case of working with, with schools as partners in the city and encouraging them, understanding what, what their, what their needs are, what the challenges are that they face, whether that is, you know, logistical, physical space, capacity to, to provide the right staffing, whether it's training, whether it is just the, the other pressures that that particular school faces. So our commissioning work and our, our work with, that colleagues in Education and Skills do is, is really, you know, looking at how we can ensure that as far as possible there is a, you know, equity in terms of the offer across the city. Matt, I don't know if you want to say anything else on IRs and describe the, what that is.
Yeah. So just, just to expand a bit on an integrated resource or IR. Essentially, it's a provision within a mainstream school where a young person with more complex SEN needs will split their time between that and their mainstream lessons. Now, there isn't a set, you know, amount of time across the city for how that works. It's based on the needs of a child. But for example, a child may spend 30% of their time in integrated resource, 70% in their mainstream, another child might do 60, 40. That is very much driven by the needs of that child and the work that school does. How it kind of practically works is we commission schools to provide integrated resources. So as an example, we've commissioned a primary school to provide 10 places which we fund. And the school will employ staff, usually TA staff, to, to run that provision with a SENCO, Special Needs Coordinator overseeing it. And what we see that being a route to is, a route to be able to place more of our more complex children in mainstream school because they receive additional funding and they get that more tailored support in terms of what they need to access. So hopefully that just explains briefly.
Yeah, thank you, Matthew. It explains the IR. But I think there are lots of young children and young people who don't need IR, but they need support in schools. And the offer is varied across the city depending on, on where you are.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I've left mine on anyway. Yes, absolutely. And I, and that's the work that, that we do with, with our colleagues in Education and Skills around supporting schools to support children in, in, in their mainstream settings. And as you say, not, not every child with some additional needs is going to need integrated resource time. They may, you know, need just some, you know, anything from a toilet pass or a, you know, a hall pass or, you know, somebody that they can go and talk to. The, the needs are, are, are very varied. And I know that that's, that's work that I'm sure Rose would, Rose would be really happy to come and talk to committee members in more detail about, in terms of our work with, with schools. You also asked about the wider engagement and the timeframe for coming back to committee. The timeframe that we're working to is, is January, yes. Yeah, it's to bring a draft here in January. To bring, the trapdoor's opened over there. It's to bring a, a draft back in, in, in January for further engagement and comment from, from the committee. Do you want to put that up?
Yeah, I think just to add to that, yeah. So our intention is to bring a draft version of the plan to, to committee in January. You know, we are, to be honest, finding our feet in terms of how the committee system works and how to engage members. So, you know, yeah, so we're, I think we'll be open to how do we then, you know, further engage, engage committee members in that process. But as I say, we're deliberately bringing a draft to give us more scope to that engagement work. So in terms of the timeline for then publication, perhaps that's something we can further discuss at the January committee in terms of how close we feel to that. But that's something within, you know, our gift as a, as a group to, to, you know, to set.
That's great. Thank you, Matthew. And finally, councillor Garbutt.
Really all it was, it was in relation to what councillor Murphy said. And if we were looking at that you, children don't get the support they need if they haven't got a diagnosis, then we all need, also need to take into account the length of time that it takes to get a diagnosis. Yeah, we're, we're not looking at six weeks or six months. We're looking at two to three years. And during that two to three years, some children are absolutely floundering. I've actually got a couple of bits of casework where, where that's happening to people. And the school are just not supporting them and saying, you have, your child doesn't have a diagnosis. You know, so they're not offering them particularly any support. I think in, also in terms of transition, we need to take into account that there are children at secondary schools in year nine that didn't get any transition whatsoever. And it's still affecting them to this day. I mean, I have a grandson that it's affecting to this day. He has special educational needs that are not being met by the school that he's at. I think also I take councillor Dale's point that depending where you live in the city, you do get a better offer. And some schools, even within one area, if you've got three or four schools in an area, then you've got some schools that will be making a much better job of identifying children that need additional support and actually giving them that additional support without a specific diagnosis. And I think that, that, that does need, need addressing. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whitaker. Sorry I didn't spot you. Keep waving at me from this side. Thank you. Councillor Garbutt.
Yeah, going back to this integrated resource question. When I sat on admissions, we quite often get, we got parents who were saying, I want my child to go to this school because they do this better. But we were told that we weren't allowed to allocate on that basis because we were, we had to assume that all schools offered exactly the same thing. Quite obviously, they don't. Not only that, but they can't. Because there are so many different ways, you know, different, different send requirements, that not every school can offer every send requirement. That's, it, it would be far too much to ask. So I, I just think that, you know, an integrate, sorry, integrated resource is great. But that we very, very much need to make sure that every area of Sheffield has schools which between them can offer a wide range of resources. But we must acknowledge at the same time that not every school can offer the same, can offer all those resources.
Yes, I, I absolutely understand your, your point. I think the, the challenge is that the admissions process is as is set. And it is, you know, it has very specific criteria that are prescribed by, by government. And on that basis, we allocate places. And I think the, the way that that works means that actually we do have to do everything we can to try and ensure that if a child should be in mainstream school, the offer is right in every school to meet their needs. If they should be in, and could be in mainstream, they should and must be in mainstream. And we must work with schools to support the schools to have the right offer and to be able to flex that offer and respond to changing needs at different times. And the COVID impact is a really, really good example of huge changes and, and different ask of schools. And I think as a system, we've got to get agile with our schools responding to need and being able to put in the right targeted support at the right time for the right, for the right students and their families where necessary as well.
Thank you, everyone. Just mindful of time, we have one more item. And, and just to officers, this is, as it says in the, in the paper, this is policy development. And I think it is very, very important that members are engaged in policy development all the way through the process and not just in these very formal meetings. So any way that we can assist or any workshops or, you know, groups that we can get involved in, I'm sure we'd all be very keen to do that as well. Thank you. Item number 11 on the agenda, which is our final item today, is a all-phase mainstream commissioning plan for 2023 to 2026. And this is a headline report. And that's not Sam Martin. Welcome to the meeting. If you'd just like to introduce yourselves.
Yeah, we're shape-shifting today. Tracy, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi. Thank you for introducing me. I'm Tracy Brook and I'm from the Education and Childcare Commissioning Team. And I'm here on behalf of item 11.
Thank you. If you'd like to go ahead.
Yep. So just to explain, I'm going to cover what Sam was going to cover because he's unfortunately not able to come today. And then obviously we've been up for discussion again. So very briefly, as a councillor, our statutory duties around education and schools have changed over the last 10 years. We no longer directly run early years provision in most schools. But one of our duties is still plan ahead to make sure there is sufficient provision for children and families and suitable places for pupils. And to do this, we have a try and test methodology. And we have a great group of officers who work hard on this every year, of which Tracy and Cora over there are two of them. The methodology looks at birth and population rates, where new housing developments are coming down the line, parental preference, and also tries to account for changes in migration patterns over the short to medium term. Broadly, we get this right. So for September 22, in primary, we were able to offer a reception place at a preferred school to 98.1% of applicants, compared to 98.4% nationally. In secondary, we offered a place to a preferred school to 95.76% of secondary year seven applicants, compared to a national average of 95.8%. So both of those figures are broadly in line with the national average. But it's a forecast, so there is a, there is a margin for error. And the further into the future we go, the greater the risk is for margin for error. The Department for Education expects and allow for forecasting inaccuracies. They allow a small 2% contingency when we agree the number of places that we'll need in the future. To respond to this and keep managing this, we constantly revise and update forecasts based on emerging data in order to manage the risk of under and oversupply of school places. As an example of this, we, you know, we've, we've had migration due to the war in Ukraine, which obviously we hadn't anticipated. Between September 21 and 22, 31 primary and 67 secondary children were offered a school place within 15 days of application. So looking ahead, we want to agree and set out our strategy for the next three years and beyond. This will give us a clear picture of where we think things are going and will shape our approach to planning, providing information for schools and academy trusts and childcare providers to enable them to plan and develop their provision as well. Just in terms of the, the broad pitch that we have in Sheffield, which is covered in the paper, there was a population bulge moving through primary school between the years 2002 to 2012, which has now gone through. And numbers in primary are falling and are anticipated to continue to fall over the next five to 10 years. This bulge is currently moving through the secondary phase. So we are planning a number of temporary across-the-board expansions, with some more permanent expansions in some areas where there'll be increased demand over a longer period. We don't currently project that we'll need any new schools in mainstream now or in the next five to 10 years, but perhaps a few expansions in specific areas to meet demand. We will still also be looking at a number of schools having surplus places as numbers fall. So we'll need to plan and work with those schools carefully to avoid where we can schools being put at risk of closure. When we've got surplus capacity starting to appear, we are looking at opportunities around this. For example, special needs places. The draft strategy document itself is detailed and runs to many pages. We will need to consult widely on it and we want to bring a final version back to committee in the summer 2023 for sign-off. And so hopefully that's just a, you know, a quick overview that gives, gives committee an update on this item. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Hampshire.
Hi. There's one area which I'm, I'm interested in particularly, which is the central area. And it's the changes in the housing market that are going to take place there over the next 15 or so years. Taking us through to 2039, I think it says in the report. So 2,300 new homes per year. I think I work it out at about 25,000 homes over that period. That's going to be a big change. Now, a lot of those homes are going to be quite small. We know that. And that's, you know, what comes through the planning system. So what changes do you think are going to be needed there? I think it's going to be, early years are going to be significant because you'll have young families there, you'll have young people, young families, that'll be trying to move out of the area because they're small homes. But, so will that be a main factor, do you think? Tracy Johnson.
Yeah, that's a, it's a great question. And, yeah, I think that, I think the figures may have just changed since it was put in the paper at 2,300 per year. I think it's now 2,100, but it's since we put a bit of the paper. And so, yes, it is quite a fairly significant number of houses. And in the central area in particular, we are actually working with a planning team. And we're actually making sure that we understand what the likely pupil yield will be for every 100 houses. We've actually calculated out what the average pupil yield will be. And the idea is that we'll be sort of adopting a more sophisticated methodology. Um, the idea is that we'll be sort of adopting a more sophisticated methodology and hopefully, hopefully come up with a variable pupil yield depending on the types of housing. So as you said, it could be one bedroom, it could be three bedroom and depend, and depending on where they are located as well. So we're hoping to work with planners. So we've got our, our idea at the minute, sort of on, based on the average of, of, of three pupils per year group for every hundred houses built. We know, uh, and we've factored that into the, into the forecasting. Uh, but moving forward, as we get more, more information, as, as the planning permission is approved and we, and we actually understand exactly where these houses are going to be and the types of houses they are, the variable pupil yield will hopefully kick in and then we'll be able to factor in the more accurate pupil yield as we go forward, as we work with planners over, well, it's, the, the houses are coming on stream between now and twenty thirty-nine, so it's a long journey.
And there could be a lot of change within that.
Yeah, um, thank you. That's, as Tracy said, that's something that we work really closely with planning on. And I think it's, um, it's important to, to, um, to understand the process that we go through whereby we, we, we plot and plan. Uh, and, you know, as, as, as Matt said, the further it, it away in time, the, the greater the degree of inaccuracy. But actually, what we're doing all the time is tying back, tying back, learning, learning more and more about how accurate we can be. And actually, our accuracy is really, is really pretty, pretty good, um, and getting better. Um, so, you know, it is a case of, well, this is, we'll have a, a margin, a kind of a, an expected yield. And then as we know exactly where those homes will be and which size will be where, um, then, then we can refine that, that forecast. Yeah, absolutely. And, and, and that is quite nuanced. It sounds quite like a blunt approach, but actually it is quite nuanced in terms of looking at what, what type, what, what age range that is likely to be.
Thank you. I'll just come in and then it's councillor Ross, if that's okay. I just have a burning question regarding early years. Again, I think this is a thread through everything that we always discuss, uh, in this, in this area. And as one of the strategic objectives is to ensure sufficient good quality early years and educate and childcare provision for working parents and those in education or training to access funded early years places. Are you taking into account the vulnerability of current childcare facilities, namely in our most deprived communities that are actually looking at closure now? So is that being taken into account in this piece of work?
Oh, yeah. So, sorry, we're fighting to get, to, to give you an answer, aren't we? Um, so yes, we, we have discussed it here before. It is a source of concern, um, and we have had conversations here and at the Health and Wellbeing Board about the, um, the, the fragility really of the childcare market, in particular in some of the more disadvantaged areas of the city. And, uh, there is a national, um, dialogue, let's say, uh, about, uh, the, whether the fell, the funded early years, early learning, um, places, uh, rate is actually a viable rate. And there are challenges in some of our more disadvantaged areas where actually that fall rate can be extended, uh, to two-year-olds, um, because actually that, that is challenging to, to deliver, um, viably. So I think it's fair to say that we are working, you know, closely, whenever we, uh, are aware of a provider we will, who's in difficulty, we, we will look at, uh, what the, what the provision is in the area overall, um, and whether, you know, um, whether we need to intervene in the market. It is, um, it is slightly, slightly different from our schools', um, duties, uh, in terms of provision. So it, it is, we are required to intervene in the market only if there is insufficient to, to deliver. And that would be about working with the private sector or with the independent sector, could be the voluntary sector, community sector, um, to, to stimulate the market in areas where there is, uh, insufficient provision. I don't know if anyone wants to, do you want to add anything, Tracy?
Just one thing to add is that, um, in the actual detailed strategy, which will be brought back to the January committee, um, it does actually reference that, those, those points, uh, in terms of the sustainability and that we've, we've spoken to providers and we hear what they're saying in terms of the difficulties they're facing in those areas.
Thank you. It's just, at, at, yes, I, I'll bring you in, uh, after calling. Uh, at the early years event, I was approached by twelve different community nurseries who are all at risk. And whilst we're looking at sufficiency moving forward, they're on a cliff edge. So there might be sufficiency now, but, you know, before we know it, it will be gone and it will be very difficult to bring back. Um, and it is in communities where families are under increased pressure to go back to work. Some of these nurseries have had to stop providing baby care for children from six months, which then stops people being able to go to work and we create a cycle, don't we, where people can't get back to work. Um, so if, yeah, I'll look forward to seeing that as part of the, uh, report. Thank you, councillor Ross.
Thank you. Yeah, it's just, uh, it was addressed in the report to, um, a certain extent, but the, internal migration is relatively easy to, I put an address on a live birth, but they don't stay there. You know, they, they are coming up to school age, move to preferred catchment areas. And as the governor of a school, we told sufficient places, you've got sufficient places. Oops, you're oversubscribed to catchment pupils each, each year and, and a difficult one, but it's, it's something that perhaps ought to be built in the system. And the other comment really is about the planning system. It's relatively easy, um, to plan when there's a sixty houses built or one ever, area or, or whatever. But when there's four houses here and four houses there, all in the same area, we must remember to aggregate that because that will soon add up to thirty houses, one per year group or whatever and, and, and so on. And I know, um, colleagues in the passing north of the city where a lot of small developments, um, warned about it. And, yeah, lo and behold, oversubscribed at, at, at some of the schools there, not because of a major development, but lots of pockets of, of development.
That, that's a, that is a great, a great point. And actually, we, we are, we do get consulted for every single development, including the small ones. So we, we are aware of these pockets of, of developments and we are checking whether that impacts in terms of pupil yield and whether we can secure contrib, uh, developer contributions through the section one oh six funding as a result of that. So we, we are, we are actually alerted through planning for every, every single planning permission, uh, that comes through. But thank you for that, yeah.
Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Just to follow on from what councillor Dale said earlier, i- in certain areas, our, um, certainly our, um, early years, early education and childcare provision is really at risk as we speak. And one or two, um, um, nurseries and other childcare provision is, like councillor Dale said, is sort of teetering on the edge of, of closure. And, and for me, I wonder whether we, whether we have to start thinking outside of the box now with this, uh, with trying to find alternative provision and looking at alternative ways of providing it either through co-ops with some of the families that are involved in the childcare themselves, some of the volunteers who work in the nurseries to get, you know, their CVs up to date and various other ways of engaging with the colleges and other young people who want to start a career in that type of nursery nursing or childcare provision but don't know where to start. Um, because I think we're really going to be hitting far more, uh, problems in the next year, certainly with the cost of living crisis that is hitting people in our communities as well, that we really need to think a little bit, uh, more about how we do provide this type of early years care. Uh, otherwise the pressure on families is going to be exponentially, you know, impossible to judge if you've, if you've got two parents that need to work and one of them can't work or even one parent that needs to keep down a part-time job, not just for the finances, but for their mental health and everything that goes with, you know, being able to work as parents. Um, and that collapses because they can't get some decent childcare or early years, uh, provision, I think, i- is pretty crucial. And, uh, again, like we say, we're, we, we want to focus on that early years provision. But I think rather than being blinkered about it and maybe a map of where the provision is, who's at risk, who's not, what we could do in those areas. And certainly something like Mary, uh, councillor Lee said earlier, something that the LAX could perhaps look at as well in partnership with, uh, early years providers, uh, in terms of resource or, you know, supporting organisations, co-ops to get off the ground and, and provide that sort of childcare. Just a thought.
Yeah, thank you so much, uh, for, for those points. I have made notes of what you said there because that, whilst initially we are, we're sort of not intervening in the market because we're looking at sufficiency and currently there is sufficient provision in the early years sector. Um, that sort of, you know, your ideas there, but it's something we certainly need to, to feed in to, you know, in our plans in terms of if we do, if and when we do need to intervene. Um, and you mentioned maps of provision in terms of where the early years, um, providers are. We, that is part of the strategy. Um, and I think with, you've previously, in previous council meetings, you've mentioned it would be useful to see where the planning areas are and where the maps are for early years, post sixteen, secondary primary. All of those maps are actually as annexes to the strategy that's coming back in January. So you'll be able to see where they all are. Um, so, so, so I think that's, is there any doubts, Chair?
Yeah, thank you, Tracy. And, and, you know, in terms of sufficiency, I think, I think you're, you're absolutely right. We have to be creative and open to possibilities. I think, um, you know, we, we do include childminders within the sufficiency, for example. So, you know, that's an, an example. Um, and I know that, um, the colleges, you know, work with, you know, lots of the providers work with, with the college, um, to look at, you know, apprenticeships and, and, and how they can use levy, but it isn't probably what it, what it could be. And we need to look at how we can support that. Um, we, it, it is, in terms of the viability of the sector, um, it is, um, up to a provider whether they want to tell us, um, about their viability and, and raise their anxieties with us. We would expect them to and to give us reasonable notice of any intention to, to change their provision significantly. But these are in the main, you know, private providers and the information is essentially commercially, um, sensitive. So in terms of a map of who's in, who's at risk, I think we have, we would have to be very careful. Um, and it would be difficult to have that, that level of, of, of information consistently from every, from every provider. Um, but it is, it is interesting that we still have providers coming into the ci- city. You know, there's one that's going through planning at the moment. So there is still, um, yeah, um, still some intent from the market, uh, despite the challenges. And where, where we know that community and voluntary sector nurseries are facing real challenges, we, you know, we are involved with a number of those, um, to understand what the nature of those challenges are and see, you know, what, what support they need and what alternatives there are to ensure continuity of provision.
So can I, can I just sort of re- raise one final thing just to pick up on, on what Joe said there and to be really clear, the, the maps that are in the strategy are just where the providers are. They, they're not indicating anything to do with furniture sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. A can of worms, each meeting when we talk about early years. It's such a national issue at the moment though, and I think, you know, councillor Murphy's right with regards to recruitment and training, but the issue is retention because the, the early years workers are not valued enough and not getting paid enough. And then they move on and go and work for other jobs where they don't need to be qualified and they just get paid more. So that's my two pennies at the end of that. But thank you for that. Sorry to lead us down that bit of a rabbit hole, but I think this is, could potentially be a, a, a committee meeting all on its own with regards to early years. Um, but yeah, thank you, everyone, uh, for that. Does anybody else have any more comments or are we all absolutely freezing? Oh, Joe.
Sorry, I just, but just think it's worth noting that the Health and Wellbeing Board, um, agreed to, uh, write to the Secretary's say, when that person was known, um, uh, which they now are, I hasten to add, but at the time of the Health and Wellbeing Board meeting, it was a little unclear. Um, so a, a letter has been drafted and is about to, is about to go to raise the, the city's concerns really about, um, the challenges facing the earlier sector in the city. So if, um, if colleagues would like me to share that, I, I can do so.
Yep, I think that's great. And I don't know if we could propose that that be a joint letter from, um, Health and Wellbeing Board and the Education, Children and Families Committee. Um, because I do think that we do talk about this a lot and it is a major issue for us. So I don't know if members of the Health and Wellbeing Board would mind if we did that. Can we agree on that? Yeah, thank you. So that's it, folks. Uh, thank you very much and thank you to everyone, um, uh, at home that's been watching. And our next meeting, I believe, is on the thirty-first of January, twenty twenty-three. So I hope you all have a wonderful Christmas and New Year and, um, take a well-earned break. Thank you very much.